Is that working?
Yup.
When the mayor finishes his text.
Tell we did it on purpose, we don't want you seeing this.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Revere School Committee. Today is August 15th. Please rise to salute the flag.
I would just like to say that I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call to the members.
Mr. Feranti?
Here.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Here.
Mr. McGuire? Absent. Mrs. Rizzo?
Here.
Mr. Sinella?
Here.
Ms. Thye?
Here.
Mayor Irego?
Here.
Start with the superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have several items on the superintendent's report tonight. The first one is our district goals that I'd like to share with the committee and with the public at large. As the committee will recall, last year we worked with parents, with administrators, and with teachers to develop a five-year plan of goals focused around three areas. And the purpose of setting a five-year plan is so that we could set a strong direction for our work and priorities in our work that would guide our decisions around what professional development we needed to provide for teachers. It would guide budgetary decisions around professional development and areas of priority. And it would also make our priorities and our work transparent to the community and to all stakeholders in the school department. So we met with parents through the PTA, we met with the Revere Educators Leadership Board, and we met with our administrative team and did a lot of work identifying where they perceived needs in the district. And from that, we were able to kind of group all of these different ideas into three broad categories. The first one, which you see in yellow, about community and family engagement, which came up across all three groups. The second area was around grading, and you see that in the green, which showed up for both parents and for teachers. It didn't come up as much for administrators, but in retrospect, they said, yeah, that's a really important thing for us to work on. And the third area was around special populations, in particular, English language learners. So for the 1718 school year, we have established three goals, one in each of these areas. And the first one I'm going to talk about is in relation to the yellow grouping of building community. The second one I'm going to talk about is the assessment of and for student learning and feedback. And the third one is around teaching all students. And these, of course, directly correlate with the longstanding focus that the district has had on our four Rs of rigor, relevance, relationships, and resilience. So the work that we're doing is not a departure from the focus that we've had for the last many years. It's just looking a little bit more deeply and specifically at particular aspects of that work. So in terms of building community, our professional practice goal has three main areas of work. We want to expand opportunities for the community and families to see the great things that our teachers and students are doing. To that end, we're going to make a strong push to make sure that we are videotaping the activities that go on at all of our schools, including capstone presentations and portfolio presentations at the high school, but also the project-based seminars that go on at our elementary schools, particularly the Paul Revere, and different things like the plays and performances that students put on throughout the district, and making sure we're capitalizing on media to help parents be able to participate in those programs even if they can't be present. The second big piece is around working with the larger Revere community on city initiatives and projects that impact our students and families. And so a lot of the work that we're going to do is in partnership with the Substance Use Disorder Initiative from the mayor's office, with our partnership with MGH and the School Based Health Center, our partnerships with Revere Recreation, who was an incredible partner with us this year in our summer special needs program, and also our work with Aramok, our food service program, who has done a great job contributing to the school department as well. The third area of work we're going to look at is creating effective feedback loops to measure the efficacy of our communication efforts. And in that area in particular, we're going to be conducting a survey for parents this year on how they perceive school cultures and climates. And we're going to make sure that that input is brought back to parents by posting it on our website. We're also looking for ways to engage parents, students, and the community in more of our work and our communication. So in addition to those surveys that I already mentioned, we're going to be looking to parents to help guide the work of our parent-teacher organization, especially the district-level PTO. Our goal for assessment of and for student learning and feedback is our district improvement goal. And we have four main areas of work here. The first one is developing consistency with our grading practices across subject areas, classes, and schools within the district. And you might recall that last year, part of our goal was to establish committees at the lower elementary, upper elementary, middle school, and high school levels to really look at our existing practices around assessment and develop a core values statement for assessment. And they completed that work last year. So we're really going to be expanding the scope of the core values document to make sure that all members of the Revere Public Schools community understand the core values and are able to integrate those into their daily practices. We're going to be developing mechanisms and procedures for reporting student performance through standard-based measures. And our focus for this second year of our five-year plan will be on developing the standards-based report card for grades three through five. The third main area of work will be on developing the work we've done around growth mindset, particularly in terms of how we work with students. We want to help them understand how their own behaviors and the actions they take can control their achievement level. So we'll be working with the high school and the middle school teams on the habits of work documents that teachers, students, and parents contributed to last year, making sure that all students are aware of what they've learned in the process of that work. And then our fourth major step will be providing professional development teachers and administrators on effective assessment and grading. And two of the main initiatives we're going to do in this area, the first one is continuing to engage staff members in the Making Student Thinking Visible program. And the second one is providing professional development for teachers through the Massachusetts Consortium for Innovative Educational Assessment. This year, we have the Beauchamp School, the Susan B. Anthony, and the Paul Revere joining our existing schools as part of that cohort. Our third goal is our student learning goal, and this continues to be in the area of teaching all students. We have three main bodies of work that we're going to be focused on in the 1718 school year. The first one is working with the ELL department to close the achievement gap between ELLs and our general education population. So there are a lot of pieces that we've put in place here. As the committee knows, we've hired a number of new ELL teachers this year throughout the district. So that will help boost our ability to provide adequate services to those kids. But we also created, through the committee's support and at the recommendation of the RELB, we created a consulting teacher who focuses on ELL work. And, you know, Jeanne LaRosa, who's been a teacher in the district for over 20 years and is one of our best ELL teachers, is going to fill that position. And she's going to be working with classroom teachers across the district to help them better understand ways that they can support their English language learners on a daily basis. You know, we've also had, continue to offer the SEI endorsement training through our own Train the Trainer model, and Mr. Mogavero has been sponsoring that program each year. In fact, we have educators from different parts of the state, all different districts, who come to Revere to take that course. So we're really proud of the work that we've done in helping enhance our ELL program, and we'll continue to work in that area. The second piece here is providing professional development to teachers and administrators on effective social-emotional learning. And again, this is another major district-wide initiative, along with our work with our English language learners. We have kids of all different backgrounds who have different kinds of social-emotional challenges. And what we want to do is increase our efficacy as a school leadership team and as practitioners to make sure we are meeting students' social-emotional needs so that they're better able to access the curriculum. And, you know, we'll be talking a little bit more about this stuff in future meetings, but also Dr. Vidal is going to talk a bit about our ESPT program and how we can help students with some perhaps chemical dependency issues get the help that they need so that they can better address the curriculum as well. And then the third piece of this goal is to increase opportunities for students to have voice and choice in their academic program. And this speaks back to the work that we've been doing around capstone and portfolio projects that students present each year at the high school. But we're also engaging in other work, as I mentioned before, with the Massachusetts Consortium for Innovative Educational Assessment. We have teachers from across the district. In fact, some of our teachers from the Lincoln School were showcased for the performance assessments that they created. Last year, they were showcased at a statewide consortium meeting for the MCIEA. We're really proud of the work that they've done. And we'll also be doing additional programs. We recently formed a new partnership with North Shore Community College, where we're going to have some students actually attending classes there and earning high school credits through dual enrollment. So continuing to look at those different programs, thinking about different kinds of programs that meet the needs of individual students will continue to be major focuses of our work this year. That's about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Rizzo?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the district goals of the superintendent include in building community, district improvement, and student learning.
Roll call.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire? Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thye?
Yes.
Mayor Irego?
Yes.
Thank you all very much for your support. I do want to just mention that through the RELB and through our administrative meetings that teachers and administrators contributed significantly to the crafting of those goals. So I know that they will appreciate your support as well. The next piece of the superintendent's report, I just wanted to mention for our families at home. I know that one of the pieces that they are always very concerned about is our administrative team and who is actually running the day-to-day operations of their schools. And this information has already been shared with the school committee, but for the parents and members of the community, I just wanted to take a couple minutes to talk about some changes that we've made in our administrative team this year. The first two are actually transfers. Dr. Lena Marie Rockwood is transferring from assistant principal at the Remy Mas Academy to assistant principal at Revere High School. Dr. Rockwood has been in the district for over 17 years in a number of different capacities at a number of different schools, and it made sense that this would be a right next step in her career. Diana Finn is also transferring from assistant principal at Revere High School to the director of guidance. Diana has been with us for over 13 years, all of them spent at Revere High School. She has been an English language arts teacher. She's been a guidance counselor. She's been an assistant principal. And now she's going to be our director of guidance. You will recall that last year, budget constraints inhibited us from filling that position. So we're thrilled to have Diana come back, come on board, and we think that she'll do a tremendous job in that role. The next three roles I want to talk about are actually promotions. And these are Connor O'Keefe, Tyler Arlington, and Brianna Supas, all who come from our teaching ranks and are moving on to administration. Connor was most recently a special education, ETL, Educational Testing Liaison at Revere High School, and he is moving to the Remy Mas Academy assistant principal position. He's been working with us for seven years and has shown a lot of leadership skills already, so we're really excited to see him take that role. Brianna Supas was currently a fourth-grade teacher, and she's becoming the assistant director for curriculum and instruction. She's been in the district for nine years. And again, she's somebody who has served on the RELB and in a variety of other leadership capacities, so we're really excited to see her take on that curriculum position. And the third one is Tyler Arlington, who is a science teacher at Garfield Middle School, and he is being promoted to assistant principal there. So we're really excited for Tyler. He's also been with us for seven years and taken a lot of leadership roles at the Garfield School, sitting on the School Improvement Council, and in a variety of other capacities. So we're really excited for him to show us his skills as well. We also have two new administrators to the district, and one of them you actually met last month, Sarah Humus, who's the new principal of the Lincoln School. And we gave an extensive introduction to her last month, so I won't do that again tonight, but I did want to mention her as a new member of our team. And then our newest member is Enid Franquez, who is the new assistant principal at Revere High School. And Enid comes to us most recently from her work in Florida, where she's been for two years, but she was for two years before that an assistant principal in Lawrence, Massachusetts. She has a background in teaching Spanish before she became an administrator. She had rave reviews on her recommendations, and so we're really excited to have her join the team at Revere High School. And that's it for our new administrative staff.
Any members of the committee like to weigh in? No?
So the next two items on the superintendent's report in Section C, we wanted to share some data that just recently came back from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey and also talk about the screening, brief intervention, referral, and treatment program that we're going to be implementing beginning next year in grades seven and 10. And Dr. Vidal is going to give this presentation. He said to me today, he said, "It's probably best if we kind of do them a little bit together because the youth risk behavior survey data leads directly into the need for the screening, brief intervention, referral, and treatment program that we're going to be doing as mandated by the State Department of Education." So I'll kick it over to Dr. Vidal to present on this.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. I'm happy to present some of the results that we just had from our Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Yesterday, I met with representatives from Mass General Hospital, who we partner with to administer the survey. We do it here in the schools. They analyze the data and then share the data back with us. So the survey is a national school-based survey that was developed by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. It's administered every other year in the schools, and so we have data going back 20 years to 1997. So we have 10 data points. Revere students took the survey in April of 2017, and the survey is anonymous and confidential. So prior to sending the survey, we sent out a letter to families explaining what the survey is all about, and we received passive consent. I was contacted by a few families. Many families talked to the schools directly. I was contacted by three families. I spoke to one via the phone, and I talked to two parents in person just to tell them about the survey, why we do it, and how valuable the information is. We're very happy with our response rates this year. We gave it in our three middle schools to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and we received 95% participation. And at our high schools, in Revere High School and Seacoast, 86% of the students completed the survey. So we're very happy with those response rates. The survey begins by looking at some assets that youths have, and so our students have a lot of assets that we all know about. Some of the things I'd like to highlight that we're very excited about, 79% of middle school students and 88% of high school students have reported that they have an adult or family member that they can talk to about important things. So that level of support is something that we're really happy with, and I think we're attributing some of the uptick at the high school with our advisory program, how students all attend advisory, and 88% of the students feel as though they have somebody they can talk to. And that really is something that we're proud of, and we look to increase that and continue that. We also have great numbers as far as aspirations for future education. 84% of middle school students and 79% of high school students have reported that they aspire to complete college or more. And we're also excited that 83% of our high school students have reported having grades that are mostly As, Bs, and Cs. So again, that will hopefully correlate to more success. One thing that we found a little bit interesting is, an asset is considered sleeping eight or more hours. Only 49% of our middle school students and 24% of our high school students reported getting eight or more hours of sleep per night. So that's something that we do want to look at, and that was, you know, another interesting trend that we saw. Three areas of interest that I'd like to highlight tonight is mental health, bullying, and substance use. So these are just some of the pieces that we pulled out and we talked to about with our team from Mass General. And, you know, this is something that we'll be sharing moving forward and looking at ways that the district can address some of these issues. So in the area of mental health, these are two graphs that show a 10-year period, and it shows on the left side, middle school students, and on the right side, high school students who have reported feeling sad or hopeless for two or more weeks in the past year. And so this, for us, is an indicator of potential depression or some more potential need. So these are some of our at-risk kids. We're noticing a little bit of decline recently, so we've gone down from 28% to 25% at the middle school level, but we're still seeing a quarter of our kids that have some of those feelings. And then we've gone from 33% to 28% with our last administration for our high school kids. But again, this is still an area of mental health that we're looking at. We want to make sure that our kids, you know, are not experiencing too much stress. And, you know, we're continuing to look at things like mindfulness and social-emotional learning to try to address some of this. We've also looked to increase guidance counseling and social workers at the middle and high school level to address some of this need. We've also seen a slight dip in reports of bullying. So these are the percentage of students who have reported feeling that they've been bullied. So we're at 31% of middle school students, and that's down from 35%. And we've seen a decline from 23% to 13% who have reported feeling bullying. Now, what we do with that information is we take it at the school, and we do a full bullying investigation. And what we found is a number of those don't turn into what the state adopts as a bullying finding. What it may be is it may be a negative social interaction. It might not rise to the level of bullying. But any of those complaints, we take seriously, we investigate, and we try to deploy those resources. And what I think is through our education program about what bullying is and working with families and working with students, we have seen that decline, and that's something that we'll still continue to look at and continue to work with students. So in those two areas, something that Dr. Kelly had mentioned that we're really excited about, we're really excited about is our social-emotional learning. And so one of the things that we've done is, just this past week, we trained 31 teachers as trainers in the area of social-emotional learning. And on Friday, our administrators will also be trained. But this is an area that we really feel like will help our mental health. It will help our students with bullying. It'll help our social interactions. And what we're trying to do is work with all students to build certain skills, build their self-awareness, their self-management, their social awareness, relationship skills with each other and adults, and making responsible decisions. So that responsible decision-making is really an important piece. And we feel that as we look to improve in this area, hopefully that'll address some of the mental health concerns that we have as well as some of the bullying things. So this is something we're really excited to roll out. Each school is going to have their own plan on how to embed some of these skills and some of this training for kids so they can develop these skills within their classroom. One other thing that we looked at as far as the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is substance use, alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. We have noticed that with our partnership with MGH and with our health curriculum, that we have seen a decrease in early onset. So students who are reporting using substances before the age of 13, that's a real at-risk. We've seen a dramatic decline, especially in tobacco, down to 6%, alcohol down to 14%, and marijuana down to 6%. And that's people who use prior to the age of 13. We've also seen a decrease in alcohol use and marijuana use at the middle and high school level. However, this is something that we still take very seriously. We're still looking at ways to educate kids and work with kids and anybody that has, you know, experienced any substance use. We're looking to provide some more information to them and work with them so they can get any treatment that they feel as though they need. One of the partnerships that we've developed is with the SUD Initiatives Office through the mayor's office. We've worked very closely with them and our wellness committee, as well as the Revere Police Department and Fire Department, to help address some of these things. Dr. Kelly also mentioned ESPT. So again, that's ESPT is a screening, a brief intervention, and a referral to treatment. And so that's a screening that we're going to do district-wide this year, and it's a screening for substance use of kids that may be at risk for turning to substances. And for a little bit more detail, what we did is we trained all of our nurses, guidance counselors, and school administrators. At the end of the year, they're going to use a tool called the CRAFT, and it's a research-based, evidence-based survey that you can give in one to five minutes to students to see if they would potentially be at risk for using substances. When we received the training, they said that only about 5% to 10% of kids screen out that they need the referral for the brief intervention. So for the brief intervention, it's a motivational interview that our nurses and social workers and guidance counselors were trained on, and then only 1% of students then would need the referral for treatment. So this year, we decided that we're going to roll this out for all students in grades seven and nine between January and April 2009. So there'll be more information for ESPT coming in the coming months. There'll be a letter that goes home. We'd also like to present it at the Citywide PTO for more information. And also, I just gave an overview of the YRBS information, but the people from MGH are willing to come to a Citywide PTO meeting as well, and we can present a more detailed presentation to parents, and they can ask questions, and we can talk about some more of the initiatives that we are implementing this year in school. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. Just two quick notes on that. One, I want to correct that I misspoke at the beginning when I said grades seven and 10, as Dr. Vidal indicated, it's grades seven and nine. That will be doing the ESPT piece. And I also wanted to just briefly mention that we had some data inconsistencies with that 2015 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, in that large numbers of kids were missing. It was administered very late in the year after the seniors had gone, and we deemed that data to be invalid.
We'll take a brief recess.
When the young children all come back to school. So just as a reminder, the first day for kids in the Revere Public Schools will be the 28th for most schools, but the Hill School, which we all know returns early, will be returning on August 21st. So both of those are Mondays. August 21st for the Hill School only, and August 28th for all other students in the Revere Public Schools. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody had that on their radar as the dates are quickly approaching. We will have the very little kids, the early childhood kids, will start a little bit later after Labor Day. But all the specifics, and actually for the kindergarten kids as well, they'll start on September 5th. The specifics of all of these dates are on the school calendar, which is on the website. And that's it for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any members? No? The next item on our agenda is the student representative report, which there is none. We have agenda item of public participation, seeing sadly that there are no people here. We will skip to the next, which is the consent calendar. Would any members like to take any items off of the consent calendar? No? Roll call on the consent calendar.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire? Absent. Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thye?
Yes.
Mayor Irego?
Yes.
Next item is a report of subcommittees. Mrs. Rizzo?
Okay. Last Tuesday, August 8th, the Policy Subcommittee met. That included Dan McGuire, Fred Sinella, and myself. The first one that we looked into was the policy for promotion and graduation requirements. We are requesting that we add some wording in it so that it includes early We are requesting that we add some worthening in it so that it includes early graduation. So at this point, I am asking for a motion to accept the change for policy IKF.
Roll call.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire? Absent. Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thye?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Number two, policy for the student travel. What we did was we put a whole packet together on forms to be filled out for student travel, which would be overnight stays, the state, and foreign travel. We put the packet together, and we're asking if this could be adopted. Would it be adopted? Because it's no. So I'm asking for a motion to adopt the student travel.
Roll call.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire? Absent. Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thye?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
This last one I'm going to ask to do is a slate. These are only amendments to policies that the state has made minor change into some worthening, and that would be on the ADC for tobacco, BBA, school committee powers and duties, school committee qualifications, we have so many, BDD, school committee superintendent relationship, BDE, subcommittees, BEDA, notice, and BHE, electronic messaging. So at this point, I'm asking for a motion to accept the amendments.
Roll call.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thye?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Thank you. Well done.
Thank you, Mrs. Rizzo. The next item on our agenda is motions. Ms. Gravellisi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to, for approval of the student and faculty handbooks.
Roll call.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Thye?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
With that, any other members have anything? Our...
I'd just like to...
Ms. Thye?
I'd just like to say that I'm really proud of what everybody has done for the handbooks, not only with the superintendent who has led the way and the assistant superintendents, but everybody in the school committee and all of the folks who have sat there and who have created documents that are, I don't know if you can see folks out there, but this much. Now, that's a lot of writing, a lot of reading, and Mr. Sinella and I remember when we got, if we were lucky, a page or a page and a half, and everything else you were supposed to remember in your head. So to see it now and to see the way there is conformity to all of the rules and consistency throughout the school system, I say congratulations to everyone. Thank you.
So if I can extend your congratulations to the principals who did an incredible amount of work on both the elementary, the middle school, the high school, and the Seacoast handbooks. In particular, the Seacoast handbook is almost entirely revamped, but it was the principals who did all of that work on the school handbooks, and they put a lot of time and effort into it. So thank you to them as well.
Thank you, Ms. Thye. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. With that, this school committee will be in adjournment until September 19th, and thank you for watching. Thanks.